Shalom, Akim. First and foremost, I want to give all praise on and glory to Yahweh Shem Yehoshah. Give double honor to the elders of GMS for real very well. And bless all the Akim that are doing the work in sincerity and truth. Now, the topic that I want to go into today in this study session is about the concept and origin of hell. And um, because there's, you know, people out there talking about, you know, hell is um, a place where you go into um, eternal suffering, you know, in flames. And um, actually, if you read through scriptures and do some, you know, do, do research, at least do research, you'll figure out that hell is not a natural place that you go to and burn. You know? It's a condition. And um, I'm gonna bring it, bring out a few scriptures here. And I'm um, expound upon them. And um, bring out, bring out some key points that I wanna, about, you know, this, 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 this um, this concept of hell being pushed out. Alright, so first I'm gonna go to um, 2nd Peter, chapter 2, verse 4. It said, "For if Yahweh spare not the angels that sin, but cast them down to hell, and deliver them into chains of darkness, to be reserved unto judgment." Right, so let's break this down real quick. It said, "For if Yahweh spare not the angels that sin, but cast them down to hell, and deliver them into chains of darkness, to be reserved unto judgment." Okay, so, he said, um, "The angels that sin, but cast them down um, to hell." Now, that's talking about in Genesis. To where um, uh, actually Jude, the, the book of um, the book of Jude, actually, I'm talking about that as well, and I'm gonna go to that one real quick. Right, so this is Jude. Let's see, where is it? Right, okay, there it is, alright, so this is Jude, chapter 1, verse 6. "And the angels which kept not their first estate, but left their own habitation, he hath reserved in everlasting chains under darkness unto the judgment of the great day." Alright, so, "The angels which kept not their first estate," which is in the spirit world, "but left their own habitation, he hath reserved in everlasting chains under darkness unto the judgment of the great day." Now, where are those chains under darkness? That's something about this flesh, man, that's talking about these, these bodies that we're in. Alright? That's the chains of darkness. Because we're subject to um, we're subject to going off, man, we're subject to um, you know, transgression against, transgression against the laws. Why? Because we're, we're in the state, the state that we're in right now, we can't keep all the laws. Plus, um, the flesh that we're in is corrupted. You know, through the year, through, through different generations that we, that we lived in, actually, uh, I'm gonna expound upon that later on. But first, let me get this out of the way before I go into uh, the next point. So it said, "He hath reserved in everlasting chains under darkness unto the great ju- unto the judgment of the great day." What is that great day? The great day is talking about um, when Yahweh Shem comes back and um, redeems his elect from out of this, from, from out of this, uh, this wicked kingdom. That's the great day, that great day is the downfall of America. That was that great day is. When those nuclear missiles hit, come over here and then just decimate this place. Alright? So let's go back to 2nd Peter. Right, so it said, "For if Yahweh spare not the angels that sin, but cast them down to hell, and deliver them into chains of darkness to be reserved unto judgment." Right, so we're, you're in this flesh, you're in a fleshly body, and you're gonna be, you're, you're reserved unto judgment. And actually, there's another scripture that I want to bring out in Ecclesiastes, it's actually um, talks about uh, judgment, the place of judgment. Which is Ecclesiastes, chapter 3, verse 16. And it said, "And moreover, I saw under the sun the place of judgment, that wickedness was there, and the place of righteousness, that iniquity was there." Okay, now let's break this down. It said, "Moreover, I saw under the sun the place of judgment." What's under the sun? Where it's talking about the earth. We're under the sun, the sun is in the center of the universe. Right? And the earth is um, earth is, the earth is under the sun. The uh, theoretically. It is. Um, and it says, "That wickedness was there, and the place of righteousness, that iniquity was there." Right, so what's here on earth? You got wickedness going on earth, you got, and um, in the place of righteousness, you know, that iniquity was there. And what's that place of righteousness? Currently, that place of righteousness right, right now is with the brothers, you know? The brothers who are in the truth, which is GMS. You know, we're that place of righteousness, we're the, we're, we're, we're um, a part of the body, man. We are the, we are, we are the temples of um, the living power. So that's what the place of righteousness. So, on the earth, that iniquity was there, we're just talking about on the earth. Alright? So let's go back to this one. Um, "to be reserved unto judgment." So, the judgment, like I said, is gonna be when Yahweh Shem comes back. Alright? And that's when we'll find out who, who, who really is the elect, and who are the, um, part of the two-thirds of Israel. Alright? And the, the wicked shall be revealed unto all the earth, you know? I mean, the wicked is already, is already being shown on earth, who, who the wicked is on, on the earth right now. I mean, of course, this is the so-called white man. Because it was nothing, it was nothing but peace over, over here in this land, but until the so-called white man came over, you know, messed everything up. You know, with the Native Americans, the so-called Native Americans and Latinos, they just came over and just raped, raped, robbed, and murdered, that's all they did. Alright? And it actually goes deeper than that. But um, I'm gonna talk about that later. So, let's go to uh, Tartaro for a cast down to hell, alright, so this um, Strong's G5020. Says, "The name of the subterranean region, Dofa and Dart, regarded by the ancient Greeks as the abode of the wicked dead, where they suffer punishment for their evil deeds, it answers to Gehenna of the Jews." To thrust down the Tartarus, the whole captain Tartarus, okay, so Tartarus. Actually, I, I recently, I was looking up Tartarus, you know? On um, I Googled it, actually. And actually Tartarus is um, a part of Greek mythology. It says, "The infernal regions of ancient Greek mythology. The name was originally used for the deepest regions of the world, the lower of the two parts of the underworld, where the gods locked up their enemies." Right, so I just, I just need to stop it right there, because, you know, it's Greek mythology, that's what, that's what Tartarus is, alright? Tartarus is um, a part of Greek mythology. The, the Greeks, the Greeks came up with that concept of Tartarus, a place of, place of the dead, you know? And it also says, um, "It answers to Gehenna of the Jews." And that's the next point that I want to bring, um, that I'm gonna bring out. Let's see. Trying to remember, oh, here it is, okay. So Gehenna, actually, the word Gehenna comes from the word um, oh, where is it? Uh, I just had it, oh, here it is. Uh, Hinnom. It's actually, it's actually a Hellenized word of Hinnom. Yeah, I'm gonna read this, this um, scripture right here. So the 2nd Chronicles, chapter 28, verse 1. Ahaz was twenty years old when he began to reign, and he reigned sixty years in Jerusalem, but he did not that which was right in the sight of Yahweh, like David his father. For he walked in the ways of the kings of Israel, and made also molten images of Balaam. Right, so he was going out by worshiping, you know, idols, you know, idol worship. Now, let me continue on, verse 3. Moreover, he burnt incense in the valley of the son of Hinnom, and burnt his children in the fire, after the abominations of the heathen whom the Lord had cast out before the children of Israel. Alright, so, the son of, the valley of the son of Hinnom, now I'm gonna look up the word Hinnom. It's actually Ha, it's actually Hanom. That's how you pronounce it. Hanom, which means lamentation. A valley deep and narrow raven, with steep rocky slides, uh, that's going to the geographical sense of where uh, Hinnom is. Separating Mount Zion to the north from the hill of evil council, and a sloppy rocky plateau of the plain of Riffum to the south. Alright, so, that's actually talking about the physical place of Hanom, but actually Hanom um, means lamentation, alright? So actually, the Greeks actually piggybacked off of what, what um, Ahaz did. When he burned his children, you know, he, he um, pretty much burned, burned his children at the, at that place, you know? He burned his children in the fire. So actually, the Greeks adopted this into um, the mythology. Alright, or should I say the church? Because the church, you know? I mean, we all, we already know about how the church was formed. You know? Actually, the church used this, uh, let me just, uh, had a scripture, I hear this, alright? So actually, um, the church used it as a, as a fear tactic to bring, to bring people in. Alright? And I'm gonna just bring out an example, which is um, this, this person right here, John Milton. Uh, who was, who was born sixteen oh eight to sixteen seventy-four. Um, and actually, I want to highlight this part right here, down here. Where it says, uh, "If the church created hell, Dante and Milton furnished, decorated, and populated it, the church was delighted with the horrific images that were, that were frightening the flock into submission, and encouraged conversation through fear. So it adopted them in total. The fact that the images were in biblical was a meaningless detail." Alright, so here's an example of what, what, what they were doing with, you know, with that concept. Which was um, given to the, what they, um, that the Greeks created, because actually, the Greeks did, they did adopt that idea, but they created the mythology of, of actual place. Where you, where you um, the place of torment. Alright? And the church, um, uh, should I say Roman Catholic Church? The Roman Catholic Church actually um, created that, that idea that, you know, it's a place where you burn. Alright? So that's basically where the, the origin came from. Alright, where is um, 2nd Chronicles, let me get that scripture again, yeah, 2nd Chronicles, chapter 20, verse 1, through, through, I say through 3. So that's where they get the, that's where they get the origin, that's where they get that idea from. They just pretty much use this and just um, just um, twisted it and made it into um, you know, the concept, that, that concept. Alright? And um, I'm pretty sure there's another one that I wanted to bring out. Right, so, actually, here's another person. That was um, Jonathan Edwards, which I'm, I pretty, I, I think I studied this person before in, in history. You know, when I was going to school and stuff. But he was um, he was pretty much known as like a, a, a great, a great speaker, a so-called great speaker. Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna highlight this part down here where it says, "People were drawn, people were to be drawn to conversation and righteous behavior through fear. Maturating spiritually and learning to love had no place in the church of the Great Awakening," which he, I think, I believe that's uh, what he, that's uh, The Great Awakening, The Great Awakening. I heard about, I heard about The Great Awakening before, but I, I believe that's um, a movement that's going on, but, you know, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, about uh, The Great Awakening. Because I need to look more into that, but... Yeah, the concept of hell had grown far beyond, that's supposed to be Yahweh Shem. It grown far beyond Yahweh Shem's reference to the garbage dump named Gehenna or uh, Hanom outside of Jerusalem, right, so that, actually, this, this, that's proof that, that's where, you know, it was, they took, they, they took the um, that scripture right here and made it into a fear tactic. Alright? And actually, this is thirtyce.com development of hell. Actually, let me scroll up. Um, I don't think it has a date on it. Uh, 2006, okay, so this is back in 2006, when somebody uh, created this right here. But, that's pretty much um, that's when I wanted to touch up on Gehenna. Or should I say uh, Hanom? You know? And, I'm gonna bring this one out as well, because they may, they may use this as a, you know, say that, you know, hell is the actual place, and they'll use this as an example to um, back up what they're saying. But, let's break it down. So this is Luke, chapter 16, verse 22. "And it came to pass that the beggar died, and was carried by the angels into Abraham's bosom. The rich man also died, and was buried. And in hell he lifted up his eyes, being in torments, and seeing Abraham a fall off, and Lazarus in his bosom. And he cried and said, 'Father Abraham, have mercy on me, and send Lazarus that he may dip the tongue of his finger in the water, and cool my tongue, for I am tormented in this flame.'" Okay, now let's break it down. Alright, so the beggar died, and was carried by the angels into Abraham's bosom. The rich man also died, and was buried. Alright, now it says, "In hell he lifted up his eyes, being in torments, and seeing Abraham a fall off, and Lazarus in his bosom." Right, so, I believe this, this scripture right here, let's look it up, see if it's Hades, probably, probably it's gonna be Hades. Yeah, it is Hades, okay. Alright, so the word Hades, so this is G86, alright? Alright, "The very first definition, it says, 'Name Hades, or Pluto, the god of the lower regions, Orcus, the netherworld, the realm of the dead. Later use of this word, the grave, death, hell.'" So, okay, so, Hades, alright? Let's focus on Hades, the word, the Greek word, Hades. Go back. Alright, so Hades, I looked up Hades as well on Google. So, another, another Greek myth, another Greek uh, myth, Greek mythology, concept. Also called Pluto, or Platon. Um, "In Greek religion, son of the Titans, Cronos, and Ray, and brother of the deity Zeus, Poseidon, Demeter, Hera, and Hestia." And I should just stop it right there, because, well, this little passage right here, because this is full-blown Greek mythology. Alright? Remember that the New Testament is written in, in Greek, alright? So if you actually look up Hades, it's actually um, a myth of what it is. Because the actual word, um, hell, I'm gonna look it up in the Hebrew, because the word in Hebrew is the, is the real definition of the word hell. And I'm looking up in a minute after I bring this up. So, uh, let's see, the word Hades is used in the Greek Old Testament to translate the Hebrew word, Sha'ol, denoting a dark region of the dead. Tartarus, which I already brought out about Tartarus. Okay, so, I actually got that word looked up already, which is uh, Sha'ol. Sha, no, it's Sha'arol, sorry. Says Sha'arol underworld, grave, hell, pit. The underworld, Sha'ol, the, the Old Testament designation for the abode of the dead. Place of no return, without praise of Yahweh. Wicked sent there for punishment, righteous not abandoned to it. Figuratively, of the place of exile, of extreme degradation in sin. Alright? So that pretty much is different, different definitions of the word Sha, um, Sha'arol. Alright? And basically, um, place of no return in the Old Testament. Uh, let's, let's focus on that, the place of no return, okay, so, once you, let's, let's break this down, once you go, once you, once your spirit comes back into the flesh, right? You can't go back into the spirit world unless you're, unless you die, right? So that's, that's what, that's what you would say for like, the place of no return. Because you can't return to the spirit world unless you're dead. You can't go into the spirit world in your physical body, there's, there's no way. And it says, "Without praise of Yahweh, uh, wicked sent there for punishment," which is, you can say, the wicked sent on earth for punishment, because the Most High could, could um, bring you back into, into this life. And um, have you live a, a miserable life. Alright? So it says, "The wicked sent there for punishment, uh, righteous not abandoned to it." And figuratively, this is actually should be the correct um, meaning of um, well, this should be the correct usage of it in this passage right here. In um, in the scripture. It says, "Place of, of the place of exile." Because this is the place of exile, the earth is, because, well, right now it is. Because we went off in the past. And to the point where the Most High is not dealing with us anymore. Now, now his son is dealing with us. So through, through his son, we, we can only, we can only ask for the, you know, ask for salvation through his son, right? And um, and really, the only salvation is only to the Israelites, you know, the elect. But, that's another subject for, that's another topic for another video. You know? Alright, so let's go back. And let's use that definition that we just pulled up. Because actually, um, nah, I might be in the wrong place. Oh yeah, here it is, okay, this is where I'm at. Yeah, my computer's going nuts. Right, it says, "And in hell he lifted up his eyes, being in torment, seeing Abraham a fall off, and Lazarus in his bosom." Right, okay. So um, hell pretty much, it's, it's a condition, alright? Of a condition of um, torment on earth. And it says, "And in, in the condition that he was in, he lifted up his eyes, being in torments." And the, another thing that I want to highlight is um, that he may dip the tip of his finger in water. Alright, so, that right there is um, reminds me of slavery, you know? Because when I looked at that, that, when I looked at this little sentence right here, it reminded me of, you know, how it was during slavery. Because during, during slavery, you know, you was out in the hot sun. And you was working on, in the fields, right? And you barely, and you, like, barely had any water. So, and you probably, you probably had to ask the master, you know, to give me some water, you know? So that's, that's, "and, and cool my tongue," so that's, that's basically what it means, "for I am tormented in this flame." And, "for he is tormented in the flame," which means that the sun, you know, the sun is beaming down on you and it's burning you up, in the sun, you're being tormented. Alright? And actually, I did have the word for Sha'ol pulled, well, here it is, okay. So I'm bringing this out, Isaiah, uh, chapter 14, verse 15, I'm gonna use this one as an example, here we go. Uh, Sha'arol. It was the same thing. Uh, let's see. Cause I believe it's only like one, yeah, it's only like one definition of it. Of Sha'arol. Cause it literally means grave, the grave, hell, or pit. So, once you put someone in the hell, that means you're putting someone in the ground, alright? So you're putting someone in the, in a grave. Or a pit. That's what Sha'arol is. And actually, I believe if you go to uh, Etymon online, and let me pull this up and look up the word hell. Okay, why did it pull up hell's kitchen? Alright? See if I can find it. This is good, this is going, this is going into uh, proto-Germanic concept of the underworld, we're just taking from the Greeks. There it is, okay, I found it. Alright, so, this is where I want to highlight right here. So used in the KJV, the King James Version, for Old Testament, Hebrew, uh, Sha'ol, Sha'ol, it should say Sha'ol, and New Testament Greek, Hades, or Gehenna, which we already brought out what Gehenna was. Um, "Used figuratively for state of misery, any bad experience." Right, so, "Used figuratively for a state of misery, any bad experience." In the Old Testament, which is Hebrew, which is our original language, alright? It's not Greek, we didn't speak Greek, we spoke Hebrew. Alright, so that's the true meaning of the word hell. Alright? State of misery, any bad experience. Go back to the Hebrew. Um, let's see, where, where is it? Grave, hell, pit. Place of no return. Without praise, we consent there for punishment, righteous not abandoned to it. Of the place of exile, of extreme degradation in sin. Right, that sounds a lot like what we just looked up on uh, Etymon online. It's a place of um, a state of misery, any bad experience. So that's what um, the, that's what the, that's what the rich, that's what the rich man was in, he was in a place of suffering. Alright? Like I said, he probably was, was working, he's probably working on somebody's field. Alright, and he was asking that, you know, "Father Abraham, have mercy on me, and send Lazarus that he may dip the tip of his finger in water, and cool my tongue for I am tormented in this flame." Alright? And actually, this goes back to um, reincarnation as well. Alright? And um, actually, it was another, it was a brother that actually did a video on reincarnation. And um, I'm gonna put the link in the video to um, his channel or, or his video to where he was talking about um, reincarnation, because he did, he did a few episodes about reincarnation. So I'm gonna put the link in the video, or in the, in the description. And um, you can click on that if you want to get more um, info, you know? More um, educated, more, be more educated, I can say it like that. Get more educated on reincarnation, because this is what Luke, the book of Luke, chapter 16, verse 22, this is what it's talking about. Talking about reincarnation, because he was buried, but in hell, he lifted up his eyes, being in torment, right, so he came back into reincarnation, and now he's being tormented for what he did. Alright? So this is the, like I said before, the earth is the judgment, the place of judgment, alright? So after you die, your spirit goes, your spirit goes back into the spirit world. And after, and then it comes back into reincarnation. Your spirit is still the same, but the body is different. Alright? So that's basically it that I wanted to bring out about the concept of hell, um, where it came from as well. Um, like I said, the, you know, Christian, the Christian church, the Roman Catholic church, you know, all these, these, these big, these big mega churches and stuff like that, man, and these um, these church houses. They push that, that um, that concept like hell is the place where you burn, but no. If you actually, if you did any, if you do any bit of research and you go into things, see, this is why it's important to go into things. Once you go into things, you, you get more understanding of what the scripture is really talking about. When you get the understanding of what's, what's being said, alright? So that's pretty much it, um, that's all I wanna bring out in this video. Uh, once again, I wanna give all praise and glory to Yahweh Beshem Yehoshua. Uh, give the honor to the Ls of GMS real very well. And bless the Lord, I came out, out there that are doing the work, it's sincerity and truth. Call Allah Yahweh Beshem Yehoshua. And saying that, I'm gonna say shalom.